Good afternoon. This isn't the time that was noticed in votes, but we asked this morning to have this meeting scheduled at this time because we're running late with our meetings. So the session we're having now is work session. This is Tuesday, October the 11th. It is now 12:00 P. M. Amy Hines again is open for discussion and we'll begin with the whole call. District 1 of Houston. District 2 supervisor English and Craig, District 3. Well, we'll find out if she's English later on. So members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app or by phone, the 2679-7513 or 888-780-6714, conference ID 868190935. If you are able accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9202 for direction. And for the record, I want you to notice that Ms. Jess here is present right now. So District 3 is representatives. Work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss within the eyes of the board of supervisors. Public comments will not be taken. Introductions in a work session are always going to have a person who is speaking. And so we will give you that today. If you are going to speak, give us your name and your title for the record. So Sharon Gilman, our deputy county administrator, is going to go over with us the ways that we're utilizing the American Rescue Plan funding and now and in the future. So Sharon.
Sharon Gilman, Deputy County Administrator with the Board of Indulgence and the CEO of Chair Collier Jonathan is going to speak to us about what's been happening at Chiricahua since one of the ARPA projects that the board approved back in 2021 was a mental health services expansion for Chiricahua. Jonathan has a meeting at once. I want to get him in right now while we have him and then I'll go through my formal presentation. Okay. Okay, Jonathan, if you're next.
Yes, I'm here. Hello. Thank you. Thank you for putting that up for me and making it nice and easy. So to start with, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be able to present. I was told to keep this pretty brief, so I tried to prepare just a few slides to go over what we've been developing in our comprehensive psychiatric program here at Chiricahua. So if we could go to the next slide, please. First, to start with, I am the only clinician, the only psychiatric nurse practitioner right now. And so I have 167 active patients. I've closed 40 cases, so 40 other patients that I've seen and have either completed the program, moved away, decided they didn't want to pursue further treatment at this time. So in total, just since we started our seeing patients, I've seen 207 unique patients. I see them pretty regularly. Those were still active. And then I start to close them out as we make progress and their primary care can take over, at least in some cases. So we definitely had a number of referrals. When we were first getting started, one of the other FQHCs in Arizona had told us that they kind of expected like a 60% no-show rate, that only about 40% of your patients will show up. Well, I've I've found that not to be true. I kind of just looked over the past six weeks. I've had about 19.29% no-show rate. So I've got over 80% of my patients showing up. So it's been pretty intense, really good compliance so far from the majority of our patients. And we've had a number of referrals that I alone have not been able to treat. We've actually had to scale back on the number of intakes we do. So the next slide, please. So our current composition as far as staff, there's myself, the psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, and I'm also the program manager. I have one registered nurse and one case manager, and we're all working as part of the behavioral health department. So we do have other programs within behavioral health, but this is our little program. Due to the high demand, we're actually going to be hiring two more psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners in the near future, one of which was anticipated already for this year in our request to you for the funding. The other one, we're kind of heading a little early, although we expect to be able to have enough patient load to be able to fund that individual just on our own income. We're also looking to hire an MA to provide support to the prescribers. Next slide, please. I have in mind perhaps putting a bunch of data, but Sharon was pretty adamant, no, just just a little summary of things would be good. But I did want to at least share this. We've been using a tool called the EQ 5D 5L, which measures the quality of life. It measures different facets and then it kind of has an overall score that the patient will write on their own. On intake for the patients we have applied this to, the average score was 55.25. That's out of 100. And after three months, so we followed up on a sample of patients, after three months, the score had increased to 62.8. So that's that's about a seven and a half percent increase. So we are seeing some improvement in the quality of life, and that's just after three months. We expect that as we gather more data, have a larger sample and treat these patients for longer, that we we hope that that score will continue to rise and demonstrate continued improvement and justify the program. Next slide, please. So like I said, it's pretty short. I wanted to keep it pretty brief. But we wanted to really emphasize that we are so grateful for the funding that allows to be able to see these patients. As I think everybody in the county knows, there's not there's not nearly enough a supply of mental health providers. And so we are grateful that we are able to expand our program. We are recruiting outside the area. We've had some applicants from out of state. And as we bring more here to Cochise County, we hope that that will reduce that that shortage that we have and that we'll be able to better serve the people of this county. So that is essentially it for my presentation. Are there any questions for me?
No question, but a comment. And we're grateful also because we recognize that there is a significant problem in Cochise County. Mental health has been or lack of mental health services has been growing. And so we're grateful to you all for taking up the challenge, accepting the seed money. And we we want you to know that we're we're wanting you to be successful. So any other board members have comments?
I believe I remembered your name was Jonathan Rutherford. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that you had a measure of effectiveness for us. And that is one of the things that I'm looking for all the time. So thank you, Mr. Rutherford.
Well, you're very welcome. Thank you both.
Judge, any comment?
I just want to say thank you, too. It's exciting to have that available to the people in our county. And and I am amazed at how many patients you've been able to see and that the rate, their quality of life is going up. That's that's a great accomplishment. Good job.
Thank you so much. It's very rewarding.
My next comment is, and you don't have to answer this, but if if a board member comes to you, are we going to get a reduced rate?
Give you the the county special. That's what I'll give you.
Okay. Thank you again for making yourself available to to us so that we can see the successes going on in your program. So thank you a lot.
Well, and thank you very much. We are very grateful to you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll start going backwards a little bit. So you'll recall the American Rescue Plan funding came through in 2021. And in we had a work session where we found out from the board how you wanted us to focus sending. It's been our guiding principle that this funding will be for substantial near-term economic and public health benefits, as well as support longer-term investment in allowable infrastructure. We try to prioritize the ideas because there have been plethora of ideas from staff and and other officials. These towns, we try to prioritize based on what is going to bring the greatest public benefit to the entire county. And then we bring those ideas to the board and you have approved several of them. Just to refresh your memory, the U.S. Treasury and the legislation that created ARPA, the Treasury guidance lays out that we can only spend the money responding to the public health emergency and/or the negative economic impacts, addressing revenue loss that occurred because of the pandemic. Bringing in pay for essential workers and water store and broadband infrastructure. We cannot use the funds to address pension unfunded liabilities. We cannot use it as a non-federal national grant. That's got a little asterisk next to it because certain funds, which I'll go into later, could be used that way. It's all the Treasury guidance is very fun to read. We may not use the service debt to service debt sets by judgment or settlement. And we may not use funds to contribute to a rainy day fund. So we can't just hold on to them in our contingency. We do have to spend. And we have to spend, we have to automate the funds by 2024 and spend everything by 2026. Now, the total amount that Cochise County has is 24 and a half million. So over the past year, we have used the funds to address payroll costs for public health, safety and other public sector staff responding to COVID-19. That was for pay periods from March 7, 2021 to July 24, 2021, where we were most impacted by peaks in the pandemic. This addressed public health nurses and staff that were not already grant funded. They had to be general fund funded. And detention center staff, they were dealing with a lot of COVID mitigation issues. So that was 1.8 million that we used ARPA funds for, but then we were able to offset in the general fund. Mental health services expansion for Cochise County was 1.6 million. That's what you just heard about from Jonathan. And we've made two of those three payments. The next payment will be about this time next year. Physical plant changes for public facilities. We did the 1.3 million for the Port Health H-back that included ionizers and had all the requirements necessary to create a better airflow situation that might reduce the contagiousness of any virus. And that project is complete. We also let the board's direction, created an environmental health inspection fee waiver. This was to address the economic impacts of the pandemic on small businesses, particularly restaurant owners and nonprofits to handle food services. So when a restaurant submits their information to the health department, they were the health department sent out all the bills for their fees. Included in that was a waiver that the business could self-declare that they fit the requirements given on the board. Those have come back to the health department. There's a rolling, some middle because not everybody's due at the same time. So there so far we've waived from the business owner $67,250 in fees, which then ARPA, we make that transfer to the general fund. These are the funds for. Other COVID public health expenses. We, this is the category that the fire station alert system falls into. You'll recall Billy Simmons from Fire is Here, as well as Josh Meeker from CRM Stifier. They gave a presentation about the need for that fire station alert system. That project is underway, and I have Billy here to tell us how it's going.
All right. Do you want me to stand?
Listen, my insurance speaks louder than that. It can be heard and reflected.
I have a little bit of a softer voice. So so, Matt, sure. Thank you very much for for having us. And obviously, we're we're excited to say that we've well, the CCI, Cochise County IT, who's running, he's running lead on on the installation, Joe Casey and and a lot of his students, a gentleman by the name of David Kelso, he's doing, he's running lead on on the actual project itself. They have installed the system into 14 stations or 14 buildings so far. And and they're, we're hoping to go live on, like it says, November 2nd. And looking, we're looking forward to that. Quantifiable data should 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 actually be subsequent to to that to that start. But right now, we're, we have, we have what we have as far as the data goes with our response times and and things have been presented already. But the whenever we put the the actual alerting system in place, we should be, we should be able to see pretty much immediately the first day because of volume of calls, we'll see the first day, the the change and the and the improvement to the to the services just by call processing and and the ability to get the the people out on the on the road. Safe face Josh Meeker and Susan Popchuk, they've been, they've been instrumental in in having us come up and go over relatively fluently. We've had a couple of some equipment issues where we've where we've allocated too many speakers to to one. We had, we had a building that was probably about this size or a room about this size that we had four speakers in. But you can imagine four speakers with a loud tone going. So so we pulled back, we pulled back a little bit on on that. And but in so doing, we were able to outfit another station that that was that was underserved. So so we were trying to be pretty responsible for with with the actual equipment as well. And then Cochise County is has taken the the excess equipment. And so there, whenever whenever equipment goes down or fails or what have you, there they'll have things that are pretty much ready to go right on the right on the spot. So some of the things that that we didn't see going into, those are, those are things that we're that we're working through. But we're really excited. We're actually pretty nervous, honestly, about the 2nd of November and going on because with the station learning system, it's changed some of our operations. So we used to operate on one channel. And so now we're gonna, that channel is going to be dedicated to just pushing calls out. So we had to, we had to come up with different, different operational procedure to be able to to be able to operate on tactical frequency while calls are going out on a on a primary dispatch channel. So that that model, we're excited to see, and that's one of the reasons for the phased the phased manner that we're that we're rolling it out. Because phase one will will actually cover the bulk of the calls in Cochise County. So we're going to be, we're going to be slamming C-Com with the with a lot of calls and really testing the fire station learning system out. And those things that were that that we learned from there, while it's being implemented in in phase two throughout the rest of the county, we'll be able to take advantage of and really say, okay, well, we missed up here, so we need to be corrected there. But we're excited. Next, next time you have us out to be able to to bring you the data and be able to show show exactly, exactly what the approval and what the what the the funding has really done. So pretty excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
But to note factor, at least we've been told that response timing is important in in public service. You know, so the sheriff's department, the fire department, they're always concerned about response time. And our hope is that this will make it faster.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. And some of the, some of just the ad hoc testing that we've that we've done, we've looked at. So you're, a common call that we give is for a diabetic emergency. So while somebody's on the phone with the with the caller and dealing with the emergency, they they answer questions and they're typing those questions in. It goes maybe three questions and then it says send point on it. So they hit that button. And that's when it basically turns everything out. Currently, they'll get to that send point and they'll go, hey, I need you to turn the call off while they're trying to talk to the people on the on the phone. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty neat. It's going to be pretty neat. And and the data that comes out of it, we're kind of a data nerd anyway. So so it's going to be neat to to see the response times go go way down. We should help, so we should help our our NFA standards and everything like that to be able to do better throughout the whole county.
Good. Any questions, comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Sims. Appreciate you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sharon.
Thank you. We also used 272,000 for a public health finance officer position. So this is considered a grant funded position, for lack of a better term. The position was built in April 2022 and the board approved that funding. And that person is charged with managing the multitude of grants that the health department has and all the accounting that goes along with them. He's been doing a fantastic job. Obesha is just seems nothing but praises for him. And he's improving their processes and procedures as well. So we're very happy with that addition to the health department, understanding that it is contingent on on the ARPA.
I think one thing that would be helpful to us and to the public is that they understand how many grants go through the health department. And so I think that that might be something that we can look into to attach to information that we give out and help us to understand. Because people go, well, why does the health department, you know, they exist on grants?
It's almost 70, 75%.
So I think that would be a clarifying thing if you could add that.
Sure.
Wouldn't get that information.
We also spent 450,000, are in the process of spending almost 450,000 dollars on cybersecurity tools that Joe Casey, our chief information officer, he's on the line. He may talk in a little bit here about those tools as well as something to plan for the future. These are government services that fall under ARPA, improving our internal infrastructure and cybersecurity. So what do we want to do with the future? So that government services, the way the final rule from U.S. Treasury was written is that the guidance is that the county could either take an allowable order, this is taking me, I think of it in tax terms, like standard deduction. But it's an allowable amount that you can take for revenue replacement, or you can do their formula. The allowable amount on that allowable amount was 10 million for revenue replacement, or the formula for Cochise County would have been less than that. So we decided to take that standard allowance, there's the term, and use that 10 million from that 24 and a half million for government services. And that's why we're able to do these two things. And then we have 9.2 million still that we can use. That government services category is very flexible, which is nice. And the reporting on it is is still sick. We still have to report how we spent it, but not in as great of detail as the other categories. So what we would propose is that remaining 9.2 million in the government services category, we use it for payroll expenses for this fiscal year that then offsets the general fund. And then that that 9.2 million would go into a contingency fund for the county. And we would still need to use it for ARPA-related intent, which means we could use it on IT, health or facilities. And one idea that I had was we could use it to offset any match we have for the USDA funds that we're expecting to get for the annual shelter remodel. So there'll be a match for that. We could use some of these funds for that project.
So it isn't considered federal and you can't use it for matching?
Correct. That's why I put that little asterisk there because we can use it as a matching this way. And then Joe is on the phone. He's got quite a few IT infrastructure expenses for the county that have a five-year contract term on them. So we could make that purchase now. And while we have these funds and have that five-year term on the contract where we're not having to make those expenses in a future budget year where the general fund may be more impacted. And health, that was for the mosquito vector surveillance contracts. They also would like to do a fight your contract with them. Then the remaining funds that we have, I would like, I would recommend that we set 5 million aside for the ornatory water wastewater construction, assisting City of Douglas with that project. The City of Douglas is pursuing funding through NAD Bank or Design as funding, which also holds with construction funding down the road. But part of their possible funding sources could be Cochise County with that 5 million. And I, while we don't know exactly how we would spend that yet, I would like to set it aside for the for the very near future of knowing more, we know more. And then the broadband last mile, our other projects, the board has said that this is a priority. This is expanding broadband in the county. We have feasibility study. The draft is under review, and that was funded by ARPA as well, that feasibility study with Finley Engineering. IT is developing GIS maps. And Joe will be bringing the presentation to the board in the next couple of months, seeing where on these study results. But that would set aside over 2 million for any kind of instruction we need to do or matching of grants. And Joe, you are, you're on. Do you want to say anything?
Um, no. So so yeah, you're correct. We are finishing up that feasibility study. We have it, gone through the whole thing. And we're just cleaning a few things up so that we could bring it to the board on on what we need to do moving forward after this. And then for the cybersecurity stuff, we did purchase those those tools, purchased a license for those to help keep the county more secure. And there's a few other things that that I would like to to request moving forward, but I don't think this is quite the right point for that.
So that's the big picture of our broad of our ARPA, excuse me, our ARPA budget. To date, we've obligated 1 million, that 9.2 million that we would transfer to cover payroll. And the proposed obligations would be 7 million, that's 5 million for the water wastewater project for the port of entry and then 2 million, a little over 2 million for the broadband. And that's a drop in the bucket. There are lots of grant funding. There is lots of grant funding out there for broadband. So this would not be the end of the story.
But it would be batch money. I always ask, are there any questions or comments?
Certainly, Mr. Joe Casey, how is IT security? Is it good now?
Well, that's a kind of a loaded question. It's never good. There's always, you know, risks involved. But but I I think we are, you know, in a in a good, good place considering what we've done over the past, you know, five years plus. So I wouldn't say we're in a great place, but we we have definitely made some good strides.
Okay. Next question has to do with water projects in Douglas. Does that include Iowa-Prietta?
No, this would be for the new port of entry, the commercial port of entry. So Douglas has to connect to that location on Jane-Trench Road. Part of GSA's requirements for that facility. And so that's quite a span of pipeline that needs to be input for water and wastewater. But also the wastewater is a pipeline. The water would be a part to help.
It's a NAD bank, which I'm a little bit familiar with. I know it's international, so that's why I brought that up.
They, that's, that's true. And there was some back and forth as to whether this would be an allowable project because it's not international, but through Douglas's perseverance.
There has to be a nexus of some kind, at least.
Yeah.
Well, generally, I'm not for inheriting Mexico sewage. However, I would like us to consider desalination as part of developing the port of entry just for just it's the wave of the future, I think. So just put that back. Desalination from a water to water entry.
Why is that?
You don't need more than.
Just, just like a stone's throw, you know?
The 5 million, I have something to look into, yes.
Well, you always have to be looking at conservating and obligating. That's the two things about water. Is that you have to learn to conserve it and you got to learn how are you going to augment it?
How lazy you are.
Well, you're saying sometimes with sewage, sometimes with, you know, extra rainfall. It's the only way you can change the water picture.
How does the payroll proposal affect spending? Does it help? Or you can get back.
I don't think it would because we're going to use the money on other things. Follow me. The they'll come out of payroll. Payroll would be reimbursed from ARPA funds, but then that contingency money would be spent elsewhere. So we kind of bounce that.
But he's asking if the total added is going to hurt our budget driven.
So and it doesn't have to be spent this year. So we're always mindful of the expenditure on that. I think that's a good question. So but it would affect that for raising, because it's more time to spend in a different district.
Because it has to be spent by 2023.
Obligated by 2024, set by 2026, December.
When when Jackie Clay was doing her presentation, I was trying to think of the 25 cent word for backfilling with money, and I couldn't think of it. But that's, that's basically what you're talking about. You're moving money over here so it doesn't count. Where there, I understand. Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times, the federal grants can say, no doing X, and I can't think of the 25 cent word, but sometimes you can, sometimes you can't.
Are you searching for the word supplanting?
Precisely. Thank you so much. I know we haven't just such an occasion. Supplanting.
And she's a deep self-respect person.
Write that down.
Okay, that's great. Did we have another meeting at 1 o'clock?
1:30.
Okay, well, you met the challenge, Ken. I asked you to keep it brief enough. So several people this morning wanted to know if we were going to start the meeting this afternoon on Sunday. And I said, we'll do our best. It won't be before the. Yes, you have a comment?
I, I didn't. I just got off speak, I mean, I just got my speaker open, in case I did. Thank you, though. Good presentation, Sharon.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no further information that we need to give to each other, I will tell you, our next meeting is, again, here in the executive conference room on the Water Improvement Program Grant. And I'm sure, Judge, since you asked for this, that you're going to be ready with information for us. So that'll be at 1:30. So with that said, meeting adjourned.